Would have been.
Sure.
Ten people just didn't want to. And I'm like, there's way more. And then she kept kind of hitting about it and I just like.
Way too park?
No, she doesn't want to do it. We're not doing it.
Okay, thanks for coming everybody. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start the meeting with the pledge.
Pledge of the Pledge is to look like the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks again for coming out tonight. Um, so with the approval of the agenda, a couple of things that are on your sheet there. We're going to add G2 bond issue first look, just a kind of an informational. And then K for IBEW contract conversation. And then we'll move the engineers report up to right after the consent agenda to accommodate Brandon. So anything else, Dan?
I have nothing. Do you get those ones on the backside?
It's not a change, it's just.
But it's the information, right?
Yep, yep, that's sorry.
There wasn't nothing in the here other than it said it was there, so.
All right. Okay, do I have anything?
Nothing for me.
Anything more, Tim?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
Make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto the consent agenda. Any questions for administration on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Thanks Dwayne, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I don't have any cards for visitors, so Brandon, your up engineers report.
All right, well, thank you Mayor Council. Thanks for bumping me around here. I apologize for not being able to attend in person. Uh, here council package is a request for council action laying out uh, trunk out of 57 special assessments. Um, at the assessment hearing, the council ultimately lowered the assessment for one property. Um, that did not receive the benefit of a water service installed as part of the project. Uh, during construction, we had five additional properties that did not receive a water service. Um, essentially side streets. Uh, so as a future project, we would be installing their water services, but we did not as part of this project. Uh, so the direction at that time was we would lower the assessments to those properties. Um, so we did apply that to the five properties, which ultimately lowered their assessments from about seventy eight twenty eight. Was the proposed assessments for the one RDU lowering down to the point seven fives and ends up being about sixty five forty six would be the assessment. So, uh, this in your council packet is FYI because we did find uh, those five properties that ultimately uh, received less benefit. Um, and then ultimately applied the council direction at that time. So, um, that ultimately ends up in about fifteen thousand dollar reduction of the project. And obviously we did install that, so we saw some less cost on our side of things uh, due to not installing those water services. So, I'm just letting you know that. Uh, we will be in contact with these properties, let them know our assessment went down. And I understand one of them may have already paid, so we would be refunding those for that property owner. So, uh, without any applause and ask if there are any questions you have.
Questions for Brandon on that? Pretty straightforward. Thanks Brandon.
Aye, thank you.
All right, well have a good Thanksgiving and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you Brandon.
Yep, see you guys later.
Okay, back to the beginning. Uh, C Mayor's report. Um, appoint Ian Stoffer to the library board for terms starting January first. Anything to add Mel? Nope, okay. I'll entertain a mo- or I'll make the motion to appoint Ian to the library board.
I'll second that.
Thanks Dwayne, do I have a second? Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And thanks Ian for stepping forward and volunteering for a glorious position on the library board. Um, committee reports, EDA tax abatement guidance.
Sure. Including your package, you have some items on a tax abatement request that the EDA has taken a first look at. Um, so this is informational tonight for you, just so you're not surprised. Um, depending on their forwarding of what their recommendation is going to be. Um, it's for a commercial property that will be located on the uh, sort of the central part of town along the Highway fifty seven corridor. Um, it's, you know, property that's owned by Mr. Schuie, if you're familiar with it. We, you know, we had annexed that property in last year with the idea that there's going to be some commercial development. Also with the knowledge that we'll be extending that sixteen street to northwest on the north side of property. So, this was a request made by a corporation that um, is a land. I don't know how you describe it even like they, they're slight selector, I guess would be the right word. Um, for a uh, dual um, family Dollar Dollar Tree uh, location. And it's in that southeastern corner of the Schuie property, so sort of just north of where the paint shop is, the Fearstap Paint Shop, kind of north of the Dollar General. Um, and they were, originally they were looking at extending the street, like a twelfth street basically would go between where Dollar General is and where um, that property starts. But Mendot wasn't going to allow that, so the, the street will now be kind of just north of the Dry Creek way that kind of goes just north there. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. And you can kind of see it on the, on the, uh, the map there a little bit. Um, basically they're, they're just looking, they've, they've asked for this uh, tax abatement. And the EDA is going to be reviewing it. There are pluses and minuses to any time we, we do this. Most recently, we did a tax abatement with the Vale property. That was a fa- uh, housing tax abatement. Um, so I just wanted to bring it to you and put it in your hands and let you know that they're looking at it and they're talking about it. And if there's any feedback from the EDA members that have already looked at it, they certainly can provide that now. But um, otherwise they'll be looking at their meeting in December and then making a recommendation to council.
So we're waiting to get information back from them on number of jobs, salaries.
Sure, I do have that number. I do have that number. That's a good point, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will get that right here. There was a question about the job creation numbers. So approximately how many employees will be employed if the store wants to stop operational? There will be twenty total employees, the combination of full-time and part-time. And then what wages or wage ranges would be the new employees expect to earn? Um, management would be exceeding a fifty-five thousand dollar base salary, not including overtime and other um, benefits. Hourly, the range would be twelve to sixteen dollars an hour. So that was a question that the EDA had asked and we'll provide that tonight as well, so.
All right, any questions on that or feedback back to EDA? Cause we'll look at that at the first, like the seventh or eighth of December when we meet and then uh, bring it back to council after that.
Do we think this will have a positive, negative, or neutral impact on the Dollar General next to it?
You know, I mean, I thought the first thing, when I first saw it, I was like, that's odd, but it, as my travels took me to North Carolina this summer, all over the Midwest, this thing. A lot of those are located right next to each other. I think they feed off each other. And I, I think Dollar General does the same thing next to a family Dollar. They come in and.
I've had people ask, what's the point of having both? And if it, if they both can function well, that's the point.
And that's the, and that's, that's where I, for me, I self personally, I gotta be really careful because it's not up to me to decide winners and losers in the marketplace. I build this, it's like I have my office downtown. If somebody wants to buy the building next to me and put in something the same way, then it's my job to compete.
It's, it's private business, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what I've told them. And if we want businesses to come, we should be promoting that, not questioning that.
And we need these kinds of businesses to come in, the new QuickTrip and this property with those jobs that are going to be created. Since we're also adding the multifamily, you know, housing units. Those are more jobs for folks that are going to be in town hopefully with, so we got the horse and the cart. We got kind of both galloping at the same time.
I'm in favor of it, I just.
Yeah, no, I had the same questions, believe me, thousands of times.
And a lot of times too, like there, once you get the first business into a subdivision, then you got more chance.
Yeah, and I will say, just a informational point, what they're looking at is, it's going to potentially help them finance the construction of the infrastructure and the road. Um, so that is something where there is an interest in us in developing that or seeing that develop along that corridor. But certainly up to the EDA and up to you as a council to, to, you know, review the documents and you have to be back, so.
So we'll bring more back from EDA after the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Uh, old business. Um, ICS final budget savings for liquor store.
Sure, including your package, you've got the project table uh, for the liquor store project. And this is a project that has kind of gone back and forth a couple of times, um, with a desire to do a little bit more work. And then realization that costs are uh, too substantial. So, it was brought back down kind of closer to the budget that um, originally we had, we had hoped to, to meet. Um, and it takes a couple of components that are absolutely going to be required. So we knew that we had a rough replacement that was going to be needed to be done anyways. So in your project, project budget there, you can see that's about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, and then the same thing is true with the mechanical upgrade as well as the cooler modifications. So, uh, we're at a point where they're looking at acquiring the new coolers and, and changing those out too. They're at their end of life. And the HVAC also needs some upgrades, so. And then um, something that the Kathy I know felt strongly about was also the uh, the bathroom remodel and some finishes. So, I mean, I do think from a, an employee personnel, I mean, it, they, they don't have a great, I mean, it's not. It's a functional bathroom, but it isn't something where I would feel comfortable necessarily or you would want to go in there on a regular basis. So, um, so you can kind of see the items in there, so it brings us to a budget of right around uh, a half million dollars, a little over that. And there are a couple of items in there that are contingency first off, as well as some numbers that are potentially something we still could pull out. So one thing we took a look at was putting new siding on the building. Um, however, you know, when we looked at it, the siding is in pretty good shape, you know, and so after they, they came in at a price tag that was I think like a hundred and forty thousand dollars to re-site it. So I said, you know, why don't we take a look, what about, you know, just repainting it? So the number they have in there is forty thousand dollars um, for uh, pressure wash, pre-treat, and exterior painting. Um, and that would be mostly for beautification purposes. You know, if, if the, they go out and they have these numbers and it comes in higher, I mean, that could be pulled. You know, the siding is, it's adequate. It, you know, we get feedback, positive and negative, you know, always low prices at Castle Liquor, but it's not always considered to be the most attractive building. And, you know, that may not be a big deal, really. But, so that's what you've got in there. The same thing is true with that number. There's a hundred thousand dollars there for some painting and carpet replacement. Our goal and part of the reason we're doing this is that we're using this um, energy project, energy savings legislation that was explained, I think, last summer. That we're able to select our contractors, much more specifically, you know, we ran into an issue with our library project where we ended up with a contractor who did complete the project, you know. However, it wasn't it, it's, you know, possibly there, there could have been positive, more positives to it. So we wanted to have a greater ability to select the contractors and use local contractors that we can, you know, have them in town. So that's one of the reasons that we're using this model basically. Um, so this is information for you to see. We have a public hearing scheduled for the fourteenth of December. That would be, you know, kind of when you would decide whether you want to pursue it or not. We know that the vast majority of these items need to happen. It's just a matter of do we want to do it all at once or, you know, do we want to do it piecemeal? I, I recommend proceeding with the project because I think it needs to be done. It also provides us with that surety, you know, um, we have a certain fund balance in Liquor Fund. We know what that is. If we're able to do these upgrades, we feel comfortable that it'll be a ten, you know, the last ten years. And that'll allow us to use additional fund balance for some of the other projects that we may have come up. Um, some of the park improvements, I'd like to see some of the, some of these park modules accelerated. And we could use some of our liquor store dollars to do that after we freed them up by not needing to have them necessarily for this project. So, anyway, I've talked a lot. Are there any questions anyone has there on that?
Say we approve this, what's the timeframe of uh, having to be closed?
Well, that, and that's probably the other part of it too, is, you know, when we were looking at a project um, that was over a million dollars, we, they were anticipating it would have to be closed for a month. They're not anticipating it would actually have to be closed at all for this. And it's possible that it might be more conducive to close for like, for example, like electrical, maybe they want to close for half a day to reinstall those coolers.
Sure.
But that'd be something where we wouldn't have to have staff on furlough or anything like that.
Okay, that would be ideal.
It would be ideal.
Less, the least amount of uh.
Absolutely. No, I mean, I'm very, very cognizant of that, um, because it, you know, we do have some work that could be done by, you know, some staff in other locations in, in city buildings, for example. But it makes most sense for them to, to be doing their job there at the liquor store as much as possible, so.
Any questions anybody has or, or thoughts about scaled project?
I did have one question, the very bottom line on project contingency where it's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Sure.
Is it normal that there would be a clause in there saying anything unused will either be returned to owner or split evenly between the project manager and the city?
Well, I think this is, and, and Todd's here, so he can maybe explain that too with the fire hall project. But the way that this works is it's kind of that um, you know, construction manager at risk component. Which is where they uh, if the project goes over, they're on the hook and we're not. So I think that is kind of why they include that in there, because it's sort of a benefit to them to make sure the project stays on track.
Is that correct?
I don't know, is that something that would be accurate, Todd, to say?
Yes, yep.
And once again, I mean, we have a choice on that. If we don't want to include that language, you know. We could ask them to strike it. I think that's, their benefit is that if, if it's on project and under budget, it's a benefit to them.
Sure.
Whereas we're locked in, we know we're not going to have any overages. So, you know, we say, okay, and it was a similar, you know, thing with the library. Um, where, you know, we, we ended up being under budget even with all the issues that we had, you know, which was a positive for the city and for the library, so.
No, I just, I've never, I've just never seen the, seen it phrased in an optional capacity like that.
Sure. Well, and I can ask for some more feedback. Like I said, you know, not expecting any action tonight.
Sure.
Um, but I'll ask uh, Mike Piper, because he's been working with us most on this, to get a little bit more feedback. And I expected that hearing that we'll, we'll have some, some feedback on that too, but it's a good question, so.
Okay, and timeframe for this?
Well, uh, that's going to be supply chain related. So I mean, some of these, some of these will go first, you know, for example, if, if we have, you know, if we have good weather and we can get a roof on, I'm on, that's a high priority for me. Um, some of the other ones, you know, coolers, you might have six months lead time on those, so it might be.
Doesn't have to all be done at the one.
Yeah, I don't think it'll all be done. I mean, I don't think there's any way it could all be done at one time.
Okay.
Um, just getting the requisitioning materials, I mean, they're telling us with uh, the fire hall project that best case scenario, you know, we're looking at July because of procurement. And, so, anyway.
Okay. And we'll have a public hearing on this?
That's right, scheduled for the fourteenth, so and the notification's gone through this period.
Okay.
Uh, no, one more question for you. Would, on that line six there, which is a hundred thousand for the general contracting construction, can, and it says painting and carpeting. That seems like a lot, is can they give more of a detail of exactly what they're saying for general construction?
Yeah, and I mean, those are things that we'll be talking about at our, at our next, at our hearing.
Okay.
That, cause I mean, I do know, you know, that looks like a pretty speci- you know, I know some of these numbers are very specific because they're down to the contractor bid. A part of it is, they get a little bit more general number because it does depend on who we get as a contractor.
Sure.
So, as part of this, you know, you may opt for a local contractor whose cost is higher because they're local. Versus, you know, getting somebody out of Saint Paul or something where it's a little bit cheaper. So I think that's probably why that is, but that's definitely, so those two lines will be ones that we want to have questions on, so.
It just seemed a little too vague for me.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Any, do I have anything?
Nope.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll have the public hearing on the fourteenth. Okay, on to the fire hall schedule.
Sure, and Todd's here tonight to talk about it a little bit, but uh, what I wanted to do is I wanted to just put this in front of you uh, for, I won't say the last time, but to kind of just show you what they're looking at. So including your package, you do have a copy of the sort of, for lack of a better word, maybe bid documents. And then a, a preliminary schedule is in, in Dropbox as well. Now that schedule may shift a little bit, you know, we're working with USDA to formulate the, the procedure for, you know, when we get approved for this and that sort of thing. Um, but you've got those items in there, so you can kind of see what, you know, what we're looking at that will go out to bids. And Todd, if you want to jump up and talk about that, you sure can too.
Sorry, I snuck in on announced to the restroom. Yeah, we met with Tim on Monday. Um, so where we are at, the documents are in our possession, signed, ready to go out for bid. Um, now talking with the USDA, there's several steps you need to go through. Um, so we're kind of at the liberty of them and the city council here to let us know when we can go out to bid. Um, mostly items that we talked to, was it Lori?
By Belan.
Lori, they're ready. We've had, we've had them from, well, we got the signed documents now. We've got the overall budget for them. Um, so I thi- I think ICS is ready to submit everything we need to, but anticipating, you know, I think the plan review by the USDA is probably going to take the longest. You know, I, I would say best case scenario, we might be ready to send out to bid in mid, late January, maybe bid on in February. Which will push our overall schedule back that I believe is attached to that. So, instead of breaking ground end of July, early August, it might go into that late September, October, you know, costs going up as well for winter conditions, not getting it fully enclosed, so. But we've been working diligently with TSP CMTA plans already. We've, we've actually had them um, for about two weeks under Taylor and my review. So and they just resubmitted with all our plan changes, which is a good thing, so we can kind of catch the ears on the plans prior to sending them out. So, I guess if there's any questions?
Questions for Todd? Well, and we have a public hearing for this on the fourteenth as well for USDA, so I think we have five public hearings on the fourteenth.
We do.
Um, any specific questions for Todd at all? Kind of like you said, at the mercy of, we got.
Yeah, yeah, we were, we were kind of ready to send it out on the streets next Monday, but we're holding back on that now obviously, so we don't do anything that will affect your funding. Okay, so.
And then, uh, thanks Todd for that. I wanted to share one other item with you, well, two items sort of. So we're looking at the financing for this. Um, you know, we've been looking at USDA, so we, we met with, we talked to Lori on, I think that was Tuesday. Or was it Monday? It must have been Monday, right Todd?
Monday, yep.
And, um, so one of the things that, after talking with her, you know, the question was, well, are we sure we want to do USDA? You know, that's a forty-year issuance, it's a long-term issuance.
You go by.
I will. I've got her. Hey, it says, in Dropbox, you can see two Excel spreadsheets.
Cut it off.
Um, it's copy of and copy of GO. So one of those is a USDA issuance, that's this one right here. And it's at a fo- a three-point-five percent interest rate, so you can see the coupon number, excuse me, get that closed there. The, okay, all right, Excel. You can see the coupon amounts and things like that. And the reason I wanted to contrast these was because I, I, in my own mind, I thought, okay, thirty-year payment, kind of like a home mortgage. You would expect to see a lower amount of interest. So the overall cost of the borrowing should be less. And, you know, talking with the folks from ICS, obviously if we do our own, you know, general obligation issuance, there are fewer hoops to jump through than going through the USDA. Now the payments are a little higher, but interestingly, what you find is at the end of the day, um, the, the amounts are almost identical. Um, and mostly it's because of the interest rate environment that we're in right now. So, let's see here, what did I do?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, where is that? Up here?
I think you did kind of.
I don't know, how, how did I get out of it? Anyway. So that, that's a fascinating thing for me. You're basically looking at thirteen and a half million either way, is what the total cost would be. Whether you are borrowing to USDA and paying forty, you know, on a forty-year note or on a uh, thirty-year note. So, the cost savings I was hoping to see with less interest payments over thirty years, they're, they're not there because the interest rates are higher. And that's basically a five percent coupon, which is what uh, Mike Bubani is seeing on, and, and they're not seeing a lot of thirty-year debt. Cause it's not a super popular um, medium right now because of the way interest rates are bouncing so much. Most people who are buying debt are looking at shorter terms because they don't want to be locked into potentially a lower rate of, of, of interest. So, so I don't know, I, it was interesting. So my recommendation would be to continue with the USDA process, which is kind of what we talked about. But I just wanted to do some due diligence and check and see, and so there, there, it seems like it's going to have lower payments for us. The total cost of borrowing is almost the same. And um, it'll provide us an opportunity to call early as well, which is the other thing we wouldn't have with a normal issuance. So if we issued normal debt, usually, you know, a thirty-year note, you'd have maybe the earliest would be like a year-ten call, where we could refinance it. And, you know, Nancy's done, we've done a number of refinancings over the year. You know, the hope would be that, you know, in a couple of years, the interest rate goes back down from five to three and a half or something like that. And then maybe you'd refi, well, in this case, with a normal debt issuance, you're not going to be able to do that for a long period of time. Whereas with USDA, you can, you can call at any time and you can also top up payments. So for example, we can make extra payments on that with no penalty whatsoever, which is a benefit, just like if you on your home mortgage make extra payments, it cuts the time down. So the council at a certain year could say, okay, well, you know, we had a good year, fund balances at a comfortable position, we had an extra fifty thousand dollars. We want to put that towards the debt recer- you know, payments to cut that, that, that term date down, which would be great. Because really, I mean, a forty-year issuance is a long issuance, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have that building, you know, what is it, twenty sixty, twenty sixty-three or twenty sixty-four? You know, it's, it's a long time. So, um, so it sounds like to me that that is kind of still the best way to go after looking at it, so. Any questions on that?
I think, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars less per year.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the total payment.
Right. And the old total cost.
Total cost is the same, so that's a no-brainer. It, on the surface, how does that fit in with our, our debt schedule?
Well, in the preliminary levy the council set, there's a number in there that should fit well with the, so there's going to be two facets to it, we talked about. There's going to be the, the debt we're going to be pulling in. Part of it is funded by the, the, you know, the assets that are being pushed forward from, you know, their ballot questions, so there's some increase in tax. You also are seeing some debt service that's being rolled into that, and then we're using the natural gas franchise fee to pay for the, the rest basically. So that is the, that's kind of the means for payment. So I, actually, you know, speaking with Nancy about it, I think we're, we feel pretty comfortable with, with where we're at in terms of the preliminary budget. Would that be fair to say Nancy?
Yeah, and we've, we've got some kind of room to work with that.
Okay.
And as we get closer and things settle in, you know, you'll see next year's budget for twenty twenty-four kind of hone all of that in. We've got some pieces out there, but they should come together.
Sure, okay.
Whichever one you choose, actually.
One thing to keep in mind will be that the first year, um, and we'll be working with Mr. Bubani on this, we'll do a short-term debt issuance for this. It'll probably be a two or three-year note, and the interest rates on those are pretty favorable. But what that is, is that's for construction, basically a construction loan. Because the USDA does not finance new construction. So what we'll do is we'll work with um, a, a bank or a local bank or something like that. We'll do a short-term debt issuance and then we'll do a larger term debt issuance that'll buy that shorter term one out. And then USDA will purchase that obligation from us, and then they'll hold that. So I know it's, sounds maybe a little complicated, but it really is like I said, when you're building a new home, you get a construction loan and then it gets bought up by a mortgage. That's basically what it amounts to, so. Um, and there will, so there'll be some costs. That first year will probably be interest only, is what it'll amount to. Cause the bank will say, okay, seven million dollars, you know, you pay interest on that and then it gets bought up by a larger obligation note, so.
Okay, any questions on that or comments?
Todd, do you got anything else you want to highlight? So, just to Todd's point, I mean, it sounds like our schedule's probably going to slide a little bit. And that means that we're going to get a little bit later start, but we want to make sure that everything's done properly and that, that we're comfortable with where everything's at, so. But we're still on track right now to, to have that. You thought early, early February for bidding maybe?
We're kind of at the mercy of the USDA.
Yeah.
It sounded like Lori could promise us how fast they can turn things around.
I think she did say, you know, usually thirty to forty-five days. So that's why, you know, our goal is, the mayor signed some documents tonight. We've got most of our documents ready to go. I know our city attorney has reviewed some things. Uh, we'll get all of our stuff in. We'll have the public hearing on the fourteenth, which is kind of our, our last big hoop. You know, ICS is going to have their uh, environmental and architectural stuff hopefully done. You know, that's kind of a good deadline for us is the fourteenth, I think Todd. And then, um, hopefully they can get their, you know, return, get, get it back to us as soon as possible, so. Cause I want to lock in that interest rate. That's one of the other issues, is that USDA's numbers don't stay stagnant either. Usually they're good for three months and then they switch, so. It'll probably be jumping in the new year.
Okay.
I'd love to get locked in before the end of the year.
Thanks for coming Todd, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You too, thank you. Okay, new business, uh, calling bond twenty, two thousand fifteen A. Nancy, if you want to handle this?
Yeah, um, so you had the summary in uh, the packet. Um, you know, this was already a refunding bond, so we only had uh, the call provision just one year away from. This was a shorter term bond to match the remainder of what we had originally financed. Um, but there are some interest savings if we choose to do that. Um, so I've mentioned how it might impact the usage of dollars from water, sewer, electric, and storm, just a little bit earlier than we might normally. So it's um, you know, just a consideration if you'd like to just get it paid off next year. And I have that opportunity for saving um, about ten thousand dollars in interest.
Okay. Any questions for Nancy? This is a refunding bond anyway, right? Yep, it was.
Paying off the refunding bond.
Correct, okay. Any questions over here? I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yep, anytime we can save ten thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, we'll do it. Okay, so here you have no other questions. Interven a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
To approve. Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Nancy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, approve Highway fifty-seven assessment deferrals, number two.
And just to be clear, there's two sets of deferrals Nancy wanted to stress, so it was, it was put in there this way, but it's Highway fifty-seven, but also there are some, uh, sump pump charge deferrals too.
There's, yeah, there's two for Highway fifty-seven and there's one for a sump pump petition and waiver.
Okay.
And all these have to be renewed every year.
Okay, and it's all included in the one motion though, right? Fifty-seven and.
As long as the motion specifies the two kinds.
Okay, perfect. Any questions on this? This is something we have to do, so entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
To.
Approve the deferrals.
For Private fifty-seven and the sump pump program?
Both, yes, correct.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Nancy. Uh, number three, change yield sign, yield to stop sign at Second Street Northwest and Third Avenue Northwest, councilperson Ferris.
So the reason that I asked that this be put on the agenda is I've seen um, at least two, possibly, trying to remember now, two in the last month near misses. Um, one of which I was very concerned about because it was during school bus pickup. That corner is an elementary school pickup and drop off, and a truck was, for some reason, decided needed to hit fifty miles an hour between Main Street and Second Street, and blew through the yield sign. The problem is that there's a slight hill coming up from the old school, and then, it's very, very difficult to see around the corner coming up the other way on Second Street. Um, so, this guy, had he, had he hit the truck that had the right of way, which also had a small child in it, because the child was being dropped off at the daycare down the street, there is no way that that pickup truck would not have spun and hit the kid that was standing on the corner waiting for the bus. There's just no way that that wouldn't have happened. Um, it, for some reason, despite the fact that that is just a weird little portion of the street, people seem to think they need to floor it through there. And, um, so, I'm simply bringing this to the council's attention, that in large part, because it's an elementary school bus drop off and pickup, I think it would be wise to change that to a stop sign on Third Ave, on the Third Ave side, and leave Second Street as a not stop or not yield.
Okay. All right. The only thing I have to say about it, I have no problem with it. In the past, we've had people bring these up, and we've always kind of deferred to the police chief and Charlie, to have those two look at it, and for some reason, it's not a, from their perspective, I, I have no problem kicking it to those two.
That's what I would recommend too. And I did ask for the feedback from the police chief and from, from Charlie and from the city engineer, and, um, they were not opposed to making the change. They, they, they weren't entirely convinced that it would solve all the issues that you've mentioned.
Nothing ever does.
People are still going to sometimes drive poorly, but they weren't opposed to making that change, so. I don't, I don't have a problem making that change either. We have signs, actually, they, they feel like they can get that changed over next week.
Great. That, thank you very much.
If you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Do you need a motion for that, or?
No, that's fine. Direction is fine for us.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mel, for bringing that up. Okay, approve recommendation for snow hauling, number four. We had two bids this year.
That's right. Um, these are, you know, were relatively similar bids, um, close in number. Uh, you've got the Public Works Director recommendation there.
Yep. Go back with I am.
That's right.
Any questions on that? Entertain a motion to approve the?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, joint powers agreement with Community Ed, these are just some samples that were sent to us, so.
Sure. Well, yeah, this is something, uh, Community Ed, uh, kind of emailed me a little bit, you know, not expecting it, but, uh, actually, I was at a, the Chamber of Commerce meeting last month and, uh, mentioned that Ron was retiring, and that may have been a catalyst for them. So, uh, Jane Carrier emailed me, um, and I think that information's included there. Um, interested in doing more collaboration with the, uh, parking rec department. So, she's got a draft, um, a draft of a joint powers kind of agreement idea kind of a thing. And, um, so, this is informational for you tonight. What we'll do is, we would kick this down to the parking rec committee to review it, you know, at, at more detail. But, uh, and I don't know how it all worked, but I also, she also sent me two copies of, um, joint power groups with, um, DAFSA, Cucato School District and those communities, and then, Red Wing as well. Um, you know, the, the only thing I thought of, because it, it, a lot of it would involve the Aquatic Center, and I think that was the gist of her. My thought is, is this a good time to bring up the ice arena as well? Because to me, if, you know, we're looking at the school helping to manage, uh, city facility at the Aquatic Center, you know, more involvement from the school with the ice arena might also be a positive, because they do utilize it quite a bit. Um, so, I think that'd be something that, that was the only thing when I read through it that I thought, you know, if, if we were going to pursue this, I would say that, this would be a good time to get some additional volunteer from the school on that. So, I don't know. Any feedback on that?
I had, before it goes to Park Board, if, I had a question on the recreational programming schedule through the joint collaborative, would be allowed to use city owned facilities or K M schools facilities at no cost? Just some clarification on that. Does that mean that the school can use the Aquatic Center at no cost?
You know, I don't know. Like I said, this was emailed over to me, so there, there's some, definitely some questions that have to be going through, and that's a, that's a good question to ask, you know, uh.
Who would be in charge of this position, and I don't want to see another S R O issue like we have?
Yeah, and once again, another good question. My understanding of it, and if you read through her, her write-up here, it sounds like what they'd be requesting is they would, uh, they would look to have a permanent member of the, uh, for the park. Community Ed to be on the park board. So, I would anticipate that the position would remain with the city, and that would be my expectation. Um, how it's funded, what it all includes, you know, that, that is not something I'm a hundred percent sure on, because I said I, you know, this is something that is coming from them. So, I know that, you know, speaking with, with Linda about it, I mean, we do, we have had issue, we haven't been able to identify a new manager for the Aquatic Center. So, um, you know, we may be looking at a different model, kind of a, a decentralized model, but next year, where we have, you know, assistant managers handling a lot of the day to day stuff, and, and the, uh, Public Works Supervisor or myself or lender, whomever, needs to take a more active role in making sure that the operations are proceeding smoothly there. And that might be a good niche for Community Ed, if, if, um, if they have staff people that aren't, you know, as busy in the summertime, who would like to help manage the Aquatic Center, then, you know, they can apply. They can apply right now, but, uh, I'm also, you know, the more, the more the mayor, you know, we want to have good parking rec facilities for our, our kids in the school, so, um, you know, I, uh, basically, that, that's my stance on it. Anything else you've got, Ryan?
Those are just some of the things. I'll wait for Park Board.
Sure.
Will they be attending that to give us some more detail?
Um, that'd be what I would request them to attend, certainly, yeah. And I mean, something to keep in mind is, like, in my own opinion, like, this isn't going to happen this year. It isn't really going to be possible for twenty twenty-three, it's too late in the cycle. But, I think, you know, we would want to have something maybe in place by next year, if the Park Board and council and the school ended up opting for it. You know, I don't know where this direction's coming from, if it's coming from Community Ed, or if it's coming from administration, I would imagine Community Ed more so, but it's probably based on the fact they've seen other successful models, you know, so.
Anything else on that? Okay. On to the administrator's report.
Whew. Lot of Tim tonight here. We gotta get some, get some more feedback. No, I've got a report in there, uh, as well, as well as the draft budget. So, uh, we've got a draft budget in there, we've got, um, uh, the league has got their legislative priorities, that's going to be starting up very soon. Actually, the, uh, legislative session starts on January third. Uh, the big item for us this year is to bring our, uh, water retention project back again, so, hoping to schedule a meeting in December with Senator Nelson and Representative Quam, who are our local representatives, who would potentially help carry that legislation, uh, like Senator Senjum did last year. So, that's, that's kind of our big legislative priority. Um, you could see the other ones that the league's identified there, um, housing, bonding, um, some cannabis regulation, different things there. How much is going to happen? I would expect there'll be a lot more happening this year. Some is going to be good, some is probably not going to be good, but that's how it always is with legislative sessions, and after not really getting anything done last year, they have a very large surplus, so I would, hopeful that we'll be able to get some money out of that for our bonding project. Um, I talked a little bit about the liquor store updates already. Just to reiterate, no taxpayer dollars are being used for the project, so that is something that, and I want to make sure that's very clear. Um, and it also would potentially free us up for some of that money to be utilized for some other priorities. Um, included in your packet, I have a copy of an internship fire. So, the, uh, K M school have asked us to continue participating in their internship program. Um, and after talking with some of the staff here, we feel like it could be a good, a good fit for one of the kids to come down and do some internship work, just to expose them to working for cities. It's difficult to recruit for city employees at different levels, and, you know, if, it's not no cost to the city, there, it sounds like they've got a lot of other businesses who are interested in doing that, so, um, I'm asking for your permission to, to have us represented for the career fair on the seventh, to see if anyone would be interested in turning for the city next year.
That's a great idea.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, my only question is, is there an OSHA issue that needs to be addressed first?
How so?
Uh, workforce safety with a minor?
Well, the other two is, you got to check for the insurance. If they're under eighteen, there could be a different rate.
So, okay, well, those are things we can follow up on. I don't anticipate an OSHA issue. Um, you know, I, I would expect that they're not going to be in any hazardous environments. Um, you know, I don't know how it all works, you know, I mean, really, it's, it's like I said, it's the schools program, you know, we're going to, if, if somebody even chooses to want to go here.
Yep.
You know, my goal would be to expose them to different departments, you know, so they can see our operations around City Hall, Public Works, uh, potentially the sewer plant, some of those different things. I don't know there'd be an OSHA issue there, because of the limited amount of time they'd be spending there. It's almost more like a, uh, field trip kind of a thing, but.
Well, I, I, the reason I read it, it talks about training and teaching relevant skills. Well, that means they're doing something on the job.
Hand round and?
Yeah, hands on type thing, rather than observational, so.
Got a lot of filing to do down in the basement, I think, Dwayne, that Linda's got, have a good project for them, that might be a couple of months.
You make it paper.
Yeah, you're right. No, no, I mean, that's a good question, and I, I can bring that up with the school. How is it going to be done with that? You know, my own experience, uh, in a previous community, was where they had people that had like work release, where they would let them go in the afternoon if they were senior, and they had kind of already met their, their criteria for their, their required graduation criteria, and they had a variety. Some of them went and worked in offices, some of them worked in, we had one that worked at the ice cream parlor. I mean, it was kind of a ramp, you know? Um, so, but I, I can, I'll follow up with the school, see what their goal is there.
Just make sure we're doing our due diligence.
Absolutely.
And just to make sure too, if they're out of Public Works, if there's anything that they can't operate until they're eighteen, because there is certain equipment, like at our work, that you have to be eighteen by.
Sure.
Actually, one is a cardboard bailer, but by federal law, you have to be eighteen to operate that.
I didn't know that. I did that when I was in high school and worked at the grocery store.
I know, it's, now, they have to note it that way, so I'm just, so that's just things to make sure we don't.
OSHA criteria, and then, you know, making sure, the other thing we can check on is, you know, we would look at them as like a volunteer, so they'd be covered under our, insurance in that way, but I can make sure that, uh, before we would actually host somebody, that we'd be covered in that way too. So, no, those are good, really good points.
And the OSHA thing, as long as we're not asking them to do enclosed spaces or, you know, overhead power line work, I think, I think we'd probably be okay. I, we're not, we're not training them in to do the work.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand what you're saying about the, the hands, teaching relevant skills thing, I didn't take that to mean like actually, literally teaching them overhead power line work. But.
Well, I mean, part of it's going to depend on who, who, if we get somebody, and who they are. Like, they may have an area of interest where they, maybe they're more interested. I mean, to be honest with you, I would love it if we could get more people involved in, you know, some of our trade stuff.
Yes.
If they were interested in becoming a lineman, or a line woman, or, or working at the sewer plant, I mean, these are critical jobs that pay well, and for somebody who maybe isn't as college orientated, it could be a really good fit. At the same time, like, like I said, you know, at City Hall here, um, you know, we have retirements, as you well know, you know, that have come up, that, uh, that haven't necessarily been easy to fill. So, I mean, I think, I had interns, and they were university students when I was in Blue Earth, and I enjoyed that, and, and four out of the five are in the field, which is, for me, I feel really good about that, because that was the whole goal, but, but yeah, so I can follow up on those items and see, but, um, you know, we'll see if we get anybody who's even interested, so. Okay, awesome.
Thanks for doing that.
Uh, let's see. Other than that, let's see here. You mentioned the elected leaders foundational program, so, or not that, you, you mentioned the advanced one. Um, I am going to ask if Paul's interested in the foundational one, because I do think it'd be good for him to get a little bit more exposure, not just to what we do here, but some of the other cities and what's going on. Um, and then, um, I mentioned, we've got some staffing recommendations, and those are included in your folder, the tax abatement, uh, and then, the budget. So, we did include that draft budget, and we are scheduled to have our preliminary tax levy hearing on the fourteenth. Um, we wanted to know if there were any questions you had related to the budget before that. Is that right, Nancy?
Yeah, it's a final levy.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, not preliminary. You're absolutely right.
But it's the first hearing.
Yeah.
We've got that second date in December, if it's necessary, but, but, um, actually, if you look a little bit closely, Ken and I did tweak a few. We found where one area might have needed more to be budgeted, now that we're more into the year, or some areas less, but it's a net zero effect, so we, we did tweak a few line items. Um, but otherwise, this is, um, it reflects what was decided at the preliminary levy, and just if you have any questions or discussion before the fourteenth of December, you know, let us know, or discuss tonight or whatnot, but, um, public will be invited to attend and share comments, so.
With those insurance rate increases we talked about a couple of meetings ago, is that reflective of any changes in the budget? We had planned twenty percent, correct?
Right now, it, uh, the budget's been, will remain at, as is reflecting the original numbers.
What we will see is, because of the new employees we're bringing on, we're going to see some small payroll decreases, which were, I mean, it won't be perfect, but without, you know, it's, it's an estimate already, and so, we're hoping that that will cover some of the changes in healthcare. And with the new healthcare plan that was approved by council, I mean, it's, it's also an age based plan. So, I mean, some are going to be potentially higher, and some will be lower than they would have been otherwise too. Um, so, the only other thing I had is just to remind you that I will be out of the office after the holiday here for, uh, for vacation. So, I'll be back well in time for our sit down on the ninth, before that, so.
Okay.
Alright?
As far as the budget goes too, do we have, uh, will we have an updated number of what our fund balance will be going in next year of the unspent dollars from 2022?
So, we anticipate having that on the 14th, I believe Nancy, right?
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks Jim, thanks Nancy. Okay, then on to personnel. Okay, number one, uh, Point Library Director. Uh, so there's been a recommendation from the library board to hire Michelle McCotry, is that right?
I will be honest, I did not participate in the interview process for this one.
Okay, and that is right. Michelle McCotry, um, she's currently living in Minnesota, so, or in the Red Wing area. And the, uh, Linda can talk about the process, um, she was involved in with it a little bit. But, uh, they did have a good, uh, we had four finalists, I believe Linda, that they interviewed?
Yeah.
So there was two internal candidates, and there was two external candidates, and, um, Michelle was the highest graded candidate. So, uh, we did offer that position to her, and the library board had asked us to negotiate at, at City Hall here with her. And so, yep, she'd be, um, starting on the 27th of December with that position, so.
Okay. Any questions anybody has?
It just, it says grade 12 step.
One.
Right, I assumed one, but it didn't say it, I just wanted to verify.
Do we anticipate any concerns with staff that did interview that were internal, possibly leaving or being upset?
You know, that's a question the library board will have to discuss. I don't anticipate any, but I don't like to anticipate those because when they come up, you can't worry about it till they do. Um, you know, if somebody.
You can't control.
Yeah, if somebody, you know, I think, uh, we had some strong internal candidates, and, and apparently Michelle just interviewed very, very well with the library board, and she had some good ideas, and that was where they came down, so.
That was my understanding as well.
I'll make a motion to approve Michelle McCotry at grade 12, step one.
Thanks Duane, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number two is just informational because that's not gonna happen, correct?
Well, so, I mean, I think what, what we're looking at tonight is if possible, we'd like to get this person started. So, that recommendation number 1K let us know today that she's not gonna be taking the position.
Right.
So what we would be at that, Jessica Royer, um, it's pending right now. But, um, she, she's, you know, she just was offered that today, kind of, we've gone through a progression of candidates. Unfortunately, it's a very competitive field. Um, what I think Linda's perspective was, is we'd like to appoint her pending her acceptance. Um, because then she can get, give her notice a little bit sooner. Otherwise, we'd be waiting till the 11th of December to actually appoint somebody.
The 14th?
Or 14th, you're right, 14th, yeah.
So.
So I guess that's, that's up to the council. If you'd like to wait till then, um, you know, I've talked with Nancy and, and she is gonna be done on the 16th, but she has been willing to potentially come back in a consulting role to, to help do some training uh, after her, her period of, I don't know what they call that, waiting period is over. I figured she'd probably, you know, cruising the Bahamas or something, but she's, uh, she's been such a chuper to, to help out, be willing to help out, so, um, it certainly helps up the council. We want to get them started as soon as we can.
I would, I'd say, I'd make the recommendation that we approve it tonight pending her approval, you know?
At what pay grade?
Sure, she'd be starting on step one of grade 16, I think that is.
Yes.
Which is the current grade that it's graded at.
Forty-two, thirty-eight? Forty-two something.
But I mean, if we can get the ball rolling, if she could start.
And it's possible that she may not start before the end of the year anyways.
Yeah.
Um, as I said, this has been, and I had a conversation with the mayor earlier about some other personnel committee items that we're gonna have to review going forward. But, yeah, it'd be in 2023, that wage grade would be 44-13. So this year it's 42, so.
Okay. I have no problem contingent upon the negotiation.
Yeah.
This was a tough position to hire. Entertainer motion to approve?
I'd make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Duane, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, number three, recommendation from Public Works to hire Ben Langen at grade 13, step one, starting December 5th, 2022.
Uh, and I, well, once again, I mean, if you wanted to talk about it, so this was a position that we had a number of applicants for, so that was a positive. Um, it's filling the role of Ron Unger, who's retired. And Ron, uh, his position was changed over to a Public Works Supervisor that was approved by council, I think in September. And then we listed his position, we had, uh, a number of candidates, they were scored, and we ended up interviewing five?
Yes.
So we had three internal and two external candidates.
There was nine total.
Nine total applicants.
Yep, we interviewed five.
And, um, after the interviews were completed, you know, they had 20 questions, they went through and they were scored. And the top, the most qualified candidate was, uh, was Ben. And so we did offer, you know, the, uh, the position to him, and he's conditionally accepted, conditioned on the council's approval. Um, we do, I did get a call yesterday from, uh, from Todd Ingles, who's the, uh, IBW union rep. So included in Dropbox tonight, I have a copy of the contract here. And it's possible that we may have one of the other internal candidates grieve this position, which, um, you know, it, it does happen. I just wanted to share with you my stance on where, um, we stand in terms of, I think we're in very firm ground on it, the way we've done it. You know, the process was uniform for all the candidates. Um, the, the question is seniority. Obviously, Ben is not a senior, he hasn't been with the city as long. However, you know, what I look at is, is, um, in that contract is item number 11-3, and, you know, what, what it says there is, and I don't know if you can read that, maybe I can make it a little bit bigger, but you can take a look at it in Dropbox yourself too, is that, um, we would, we would give the position to the most qualified candidate. Qualifications being equal, bargaining seniority would dictate who we'd give it to. So if, if we had had two candidates that had scored that were both qualified the same level, then we would have given it to the more senior employee, and that, uh, I think is well cleared, you know, it's, it's well laid out in the contract, and that's not unusual for union contracts. However, we had a, you know, employee, an applicant who has scored much higher on their interview and on their qualifications. So, we felt that we should be able to award that, you know, notwithstanding to the most qualified candidate. So, just wanted to let you know that's kind of where it's at. I'm not sure that it'll happen, but, you know, they have been in contact with me, and, and I've worked with Charlie. So our interview panel, uh, was our electric supervisor, and, uh, Public Works Director, and Linda participated in that. And they brought the results to me, and I reviewed those, and, and I think we are very consistent with what our typical hiring practices is. But I want to make you aware of that, if something does come up, that you're aware of it, so.
And it's my understanding that all three internal candidates didn't meet the minimum five-day application.
Well, that's absolutely, that's also true is that, you know, typically we do a, a uniform posting where we had low for internal candidates originally. Uh, we didn't have any applications in that first week period. So, and we did accept their applications, but it wasn't during that exclusive period. And we did have three internal ones, so even if they had all applied, we still felt like we would go with the, the most qualified candidate.
But the five-day per contract is our obligation to meet.
That's right.
I've worked in this.
Anyway, just wanted to let you know where we're at, and hopefully it doesn't come up, it may not. Um, but I feel like we're in very good standing if, if something does come up. You know, it's, it, periodically, these kind of labor, these issues do come up, and it's, it's not unusual.
Okay. Any questions on that? Entertainer motion to approve?
I'd make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, we did the informational item that we added already. Um, attorney, anything to add to what you've heard tonight?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, correspondence, any questions on correspondence?
I do have one other comment that's not in there.
Yep.
Um, now that, uh, winter's here, and now that 57 is done, I noticed that sidewalks were not getting cleaned off on 57.
Okay.
And I don't know, and then other parts of town, but I don't know if we want to put a friendly reminder out, especially to the people that now have new sidewalks that didn't have them.
Sure.
Because there was a lot of traffic going through it, and you just, we don't, I don't want to see people slipping on the ice or getting caught in the snow. There was a lot of traffic going through it, so.
Sure. No, we could definitely put that out on social media, and, you know, I didn't receive any complaints. Particularly if the complaint post process, where if we receive a complaint.
But I did notice those quite a bit, and.
Sure.
Just a friendly reminder.
Linda, would you make sure that Jessica puts that out on Facebook next week? Thank you.
Do we have a minimal snowfall accumulation?
No, you just have to have it done within 24 hours of snowfall.
But I mean, uh, so even a dusting?
They say that, but I don't think that, I, I don't, I didn't never heard anybody complain until it gets deep, but it's just that.
You know, typically, we don't send the plows out until we have at least two inches in the ground.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, obviously, if it melted and froze, that could be an ice hazard, so.
Sure, no, yeah.
As I said, like, we, we typically, unless it's something that we've noticed, that's like some, Charlie's driving around or something, and he sees something really bad, we don't typically do a letter unless someone complains. But we could definitely put it out and remind everybody. It's the same thing, we put out a reminder that you're not supposed to snow blow into the road. For example, you know, Highway 57 or any of our city streets, it's against state statute, so.
Right.
But it'd be good to remind people that two inches is when we start to plow. There's always that question, why, why aren't the plows out? You hear that quite a bit, well, if there's not enough.
So it sounds like maybe a wide-scope update. So, don't blow snow in the streets, and the state statute, and Jessica knows that. And then make sure you shovel your sidewalks, and then we'll plow if it's two inches. And it also would be if there are other conditions. For example, we might only have an inch and a half, but it's blowing really hard, we might have some plows out. I know in the mayor's neighborhood, sometimes he gets snow coming in from the west, but block up a intersection pretty quick.
You know, and part of that 57 too is it rates to that safer out to school.
Well, that's true too.
There's a lot of kid traffic on that, and I just, and.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Dan, it's always a good reminder.